Item one, I-1 is to adopt a resolution in support of the Space Preservation Act and the Space Preservation Treaty to permanently ban space-based weapons. And we have 15 speakers for this item.
Councilmember Beckles, would you like to introduce this?
I would. You know, I think that what I'd like to do is just kind of rehash the statement of this issue for those who don't have the agenda in front of them. And the city of Richmond is a welcoming and safe area for all of our residents. We have been led the way in so many initiatives that protect and provide the rights for all of our residents to feel safe. And so it's imperative that Richmond adopt this resolution, an effort to stand in solidarity with residents who claim to be under assault from space-based weapons. That should be outlawed by the Space Preservation Act. Now, the thing about this is that, you know, we're not trying something new here. This is in support of what's already there on the federal level. So we're saying as a council, we support this treaty that's already in effect, and we also support our residents who are feeling attacked by certain kinds of weapons. And so the purpose of this resolution is to show support for residents that identify themselves as targeted individuals by supporting the Space Preservation Act that's been passed by Congress and Space Preservation Treaty to permanently ban space-based weapons. Now, many targeted individuals believe they've been personally attacked with weaponry that should be outlawed by the Space Preservation Act. Some years ago, one of the residents who's going to talk now, I met with her, I've met with many of them, to talk about this issue. I've also spoken with our police department. The representative from the department was Captain Gagin, to figure out how law enforcement can support these individuals. First of all, by at least listening and not assuming, and actually just taking reports of incidences that are reported. And the police department was open to that, and is open to that, and are willing to work with our residents in helping them to feel safe. Because it's important that we all feel safe living in our city. So in our city, we put forth our best effort to listen and respect the voices and wisdom and experiences of our residents. And so I don't intend to ignore it, and I'm hoping that my colleagues on this dais won't ignore, but support those who suspect they have been exposed to these types of inhumane attacks with the intent to cause them great emotional and bodily harm. And I'm encouraged by these residents, these citizens of Richmond, who've stood up to protect other residents here. And I'd like to encourage other officials at the local, the state, and national level to explore methods to expand support to all residents. And as many, as you can see, those of us with an agenda in front of us, and those who don't have an agenda in front of you who may be watching or the live cast on the web, is that there is no financial impact to this. This is not going to cost us anything, and it's not going to hurt anyone to pass it, but it certainly would continue to cause emotional distress to those who are being targeted if we don't pass this. And I urge you to support all of our residents in the city.
Do we have questions from council members?
I have a question.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Just real quickly, you mentioned that this was passed by Congress.
Yeah.
Can you tell me when that happened? Because I'm trying to look it up now. I thought that this was just introduced in 2001, never was.
Actually, Ms. Anderson can probably answer that question. When was it passed at the federal level, Ms. Anderson?
It's the Space Preservation Act. And Congress, former Congressman Dennis Kucinich had introduced this bill.
We're sort of getting out of our process here, I think. Do you have other questions?
Well, no, I'm looking at the sheet that you're looking at. It looks like that's when the Berkeley City Council passed the resolution, not when Congress passed the law. I'm looking online at the House website. And I know that there's, I understand there's been multiple versions of this bill, so I don't know if it's been passed or not. But from what it looks like here, it doesn't look like that version was passed by Congress, so I don't know if it was. But I understand the Berkeley City Council passed it on 9/10 of 2002.
Yes.
Other questions from the council? So I had a couple of questions. I'm looking at the resolution, and it talks about the Space Preservation Act. Can you tell me exactly what act that was? There's never been a Space Preservation Act passed, right?
You're correct. It wasn't passed, it was brought forward by the representative, the congressman at the time, because there were some, you know, you know how it goes in Washington, just a lot of power play. So it never got, but it did get passed in 2002 in Berkeley. So we're making ours similar to the one that was passed in Berkeley.
Well, it doesn't say anything about Berkeley on here. All it says is "The Space Preservation Act."
Right, right.
So are you talking about the resolution Berkeley passed? Or are you talking about one of the two resolutions that Representative Kucinich introduced in 2001 and '02?
Well, because that one didn't pass, we're just making reference that it was brought forward by Dennis Kucinich. And of course, politics being the way they are, it did not pass. So this is, I'm making reference to and using the Berkeley model as an example for ours.
Which one of the Kucinich resolutions did the Berkeley model refer to?
H.R. 3616. House Resolution 3616.
I didn't hear you.
House Resolution 3616.
3615.
16.
16.
3616. Okay. Now, from the research I did on this, that resolution was substantially different than H.R. 2977.
Yes, sir.
And significantly, it omitted any reference to chemtrails, particle beams, electromagnetic radiation, plasmas, extremely low frequency or ultra-high frequency energy radiation and mind control technology. So the question I have is, it seemed to me that it was your intent to include all these in it, right? So if you go with H.R. 3616, and we approve this, it will not include any of those things I named. Is that your intent?
That was not my intent. My intent, and you know, in working with staff, of course, they helped put this together, because we know that, we get help with our staff. The intention was to include all of the things that people are feeling, yeah, that people are feeling, feeling the pressures of and feeling the attacks of. And so I think that, you know, I don't know how much of that issue that Berkeley has in theirs, but I think that to include this, and this is the resolution that's saying that we support these, this treaty, this act, then I'd like to have it in there. Because again, to me, it's important that we defend, that we support, and that we protect our residents. And so if these are the things that residents are saying they're feeling, then it should be in there.
Well, all Berkeley did, I'm looking at the Berkeley resolution, and it just says, "It is the will of the council in the city of Berkeley that the U.S. Senate and House of Representatives enact, and the U.S. President sign and enforce the Space Preservation, the Space Preservation Act." But I'm confused, because there were actually two Space Preservation Acts introduced. And I think if we're gonna do this right, we need to define which one we're going to support, because they're different.
No, you're absolutely right. And I want the best one to move forward as well, and I'm sure that the residents want the best one. And so if, to me, the best one would include all of...
H.R. 2977.
Yeah, which is the one?
So that would be H.R. 2977.
Yes.
Which is the one that includes, right?
Everything.
Everything.
Okay, so with that in mind, I don't have any other council people. I'll do two. Councilmember, yeah, I've got a bunch. Vice, okay. Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember McLaughlin.
Yes, I wanted to change the language to say that we endorse the intent of the act, since the act is not actually in place.
The intent of which act?
The intent of the second act.
The second?
Yes.
The second one is H.R. 3616.
Right, the intent, you're talking about the intent of 2977, which includes all that, right? Which includes the chemtrails. Is that right, Mr. Mayor?
That's my reading of it.
Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Martinez?
Of the revision of, right.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, Councilmember McLaughlin.
Actually, I did some research on this, too. Apparently Representative Kucinich didn't read fully the first resolution that was brought forward in his name. He brought it forward based on some recommendations, and then when he realized that it was drawn out to the level that it was, he pulled it. And he brought forward the second one, which is 3616, which I think is more general. Many of us remember, just to share some input going back, many of us remember in the '80s, Ronald Reagan put forward the Strategic Defense Initiative, which was later dubbed Star Wars, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
That's where this all came from. Basically, it was to put weapons technology in space as a global shield, as a supposed defense against China and the Soviet Union. It was later, this was seen as infeasible. I mean, many other, many people saw this as the idea of putting weapons in space as insane, and I happen to think that it was a crazy idea, as did the population at large. Then the Clinton administration in 1993 morphed it into the Ballistic Missile Defense, later in 2002, which is currently now the Missile Defense Agency. But also along the way in 2002, Dennis Kucinich introduced this bill. And it's the second one that he fully introduced, 3616, which basically called for a ban on space-based weapons. And then it was, I think it was just introduced, a co-sponsor was Representative Barbara Lee. And at a certain point, this Space Preservation Act that was just introduced was brought to the U.N., and a Space Preservation Treaty was linked with it. And actually, the U.N. had previously addressed, set up, established, I guess, the basis for this treaty by saying that they wanted a permanent ban on space-based weapons that passed in the United Nations by 156 to 0. Then Berkeley supported the 2002 Space Preservation Act and, I believe, also the Space Preservation Treaty. So that's what Councilmember Beckles is referring to in terms of the resolution that she's brought forward. I don't see how anyone cannot support not having weapons in space when it's clearly been supported by the U.N. and also been supported, been clearly stated by many experts that it's infeasible, this original Ronald Reagan plan to dub as Star Wars. I think the resolution is fine as it is. It basically says, you know, the residents, the well-being of our residents is of importance to us. And it also, you know, it doesn't, you know, state pro or con in terms of what individuals are saying, but it just refers to the fact that our residents deserve, you know, to be protected. And in general, it states that space-based weapons is something that the city of Richmond does not support.
Okay, so would you call the public speakers?
Speakers are Amy Lee Anderson, Jesse Beltran, Dr. John Hall, Dr. Edward Spencer, Ben Colindzen, Lisa Becker, and Derek Robinson. Amy Lee Anderson.
Yes.
So could you come to the podium over here to speak, please?
Good evening, council members, and Councilor Jevonka Beckles. I really want to thank you for not deviating your plan, because I went on your Facebook and I saw why you came in office. And you never deviated your plan. You said as you wanted to, first, put the community first. And from you doing that, I want to thank you first. And secondly, as a psychologist, a child psychologist, I want to thank you for putting up with some of those unbearable pains I suffered along this way. But I am here in happiness, in a moment of greatness that I have. Perfect city. Nowhere in the United States, no targeted individual can get this type of support that I have gotten. We just needed just one person, one city. And because of that, you all are our heroes, and we want to thank you. And I can go on and say much, much, but we are dying within. Because the technology is so sophisticated, it's hard for someone who has no experience to fathom it. It is so sophisticated. So what we are saying to you all, please let us help you understand enough as someone outside looking in to our lives. Because we are pain, and we are tortured, and we are humiliated every day through our lives, and our lives has taken on a path of, we don't even know how and why we have these type of people on this planet that will harm in this type of way. And I just want to thank you all, and you mayor, from you being in the city, working in the service, being in the service, and for others to do this, I know that shit saddens you.
Jesse Beltran.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name's Jesse Beltran. I'm the president of the International Center Against the Abuse of Covert Technologies. Our organization was formed in 2010 in Sacramento, California, for the purpose to bring awareness to the general public and legal systems around the world about serious human rights abuses with regards to the utilization of remote influencing technologies. My colleagues and co-speakers today hopefully will get John Hall, who was the author of Guinea Pigs: Technologies of Control, which have been sent to each of you and signed. I also have Dr. Edward Spencer, who's a neurologist from Yale School of Medicine, and Ben Colson, who is a Ph.D. in psychology and therapist and co-author of a book about PTSD. I myself am a retired Sacramento City Fire Paramedic and a recent graduate of HMI and do provide therapy to victims. In 2010, I met Dr. Hall, and when meeting him, I discovered this phenomenon, and I asked, "Why wasn't anything being done about this?" He said, "It's because of the symptomology. If everyone went through traditional medicine and complained about what they were experiencing, they would be railroaded into the mental health institutions." The fact of the matter is, is this is affecting all demographics of society, the poor, the rich, the elite. I see victims on a monthly basis and hear from hundreds of people every week. I currently have over 23,000 correspondents from victims, not only within here in the United States, but around the world. What we have discovered is that there are hot pockets within the United States where there are victims that are being exposed to these types of technologies. And as our speakers continue to speak, they will explain to you how that has developed. Currently, the hot spots are New York, Florida, Chicago, Texas, and California. Unfortunately, in California, the East Bay has the highest amounts of victims that we have collected on our database within our study within our organization. This is why we are currently here today.
Your time is expired, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. John Hall.
Dr. John Hall.
Electronically not here, right?
Yeah, Dr. Hall is unable to be reached right now, so we're going to have Dr. Edward Spencer here.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Did Dr. Edward sign up to speak? Okay.
Thank you for attacking this very difficult problem. And there are a lot of people around the world, especially in Europe, where I attended a council just recently in November, who thank you. I'm a retired neurologist. I attended Stanford University, Yale University in residency at the University of California in San Francisco. I've studied this sort of problem for a period of time, and it's been a mystery to me why medicine in general does not approach this and study the multitude of documents that are out there. But this is the case, and I won't answer this for you, because this is an ongoing study, ongoing problem. This is really an intense technology, essentially what might be described as EEG heterodyne, that the entire electrical activity of a human brain can be captured in this supercomputer and certainly processed, and then put back into someone else. It's science fiction, but it's not, unfortunately, it's not science fiction. So naturally, this is difficult. So this is, the technology is incredible, but basically, this is a moral problem, an ethical problem. This is a violation of the golden rule, any ethics, or anything that's decent. And this is a major thing to consider. It's also a violation of our constitutional rights. So that's an important thing to keep in mind. And to bring it back down to Richmond, I know there are a lot of targeted individuals here, and the police encounter them and attempt to understand this and help them. The medical community is hobbled by not having a differential diagnosis. And many of the psychiatric disorders, they should say, rule out psychotronic illness or disorders, but they don't. So they can't face it at all. Thank you.
Ben Colletzen.
Hi, thank you all. Okay, two minutes, all right, let's go. Thank you all for your endurance. I see you've listened to a lot of humans. I'm going to talk really fast with two minutes to go. I'm a psychologist. I have evaluated many targeted individuals who have previously been diagnosed as delusional and psychotic, and my job is to deconstruct those diagnoses because of the methods of my colleagues that can actually detect advanced nanotechnology present in their bodies, both through frequency emissions and lymphatic, basically like when you fire a bullet, there's a trajectory, and the police can determine the trajectory, their chemical test to do that. I was just going to, very quickly, since it's two minutes, this is this month's issue of Smithsonian Magazine, which says, "The future is here. Brain-to-brain communication is real. Targeted individuals report synthetic telepathy, voices in their skull, people putting thoughts in their heads, things that up until now we've been told are complete delusion and lock them up." But you know what? The capabilities exist. This is the National Nanotech Initiative, the last 15 years' budgets of a billion and a half dollars, just by the federal government, in non-black budgets. We don't know what they spend on the black budgets. Doing experimental programs showing how nanosensors in people can give us much more data about humanity. These technologies can be used for great good, but they have apparently also been used for tremendous evil in non-consensual human experimentation. There is great documentation on this. I do think it's a little unfortunate, that confusion about the Space Preservation Act. There are these systems, SCADA, they're called. The acronym stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Systems. They include a component of satellite communication from a central command post, as well as components inside the human beings who are targeted individuals. So although there is a component of these weapon systems, and they are clearly weapon systems by the major nations on Earth, there's an arms race on for the mind at this time, control of the human mind. The Human Brain Initiative is part of it. If I only have two minutes, I have to stop there. I hope you will listen to these people. They are suffering greatly as non-consensual experimenters.
A question really quickly to the speaker. Could you repeat the names of those two references that you gave, the magazines? Could you give me the names of those again, please?
The first one, the current issue of the Smithsonian Magazine, the mainstream magazine, which in this month's issue says communicating brain-to-brain, and this is merely what they are releasing publicly. The majority of the most advanced weapon systems are classified, and we don't know the full capabilities. This is just the supplemental to the president's budget, this year's, the National Nanotechnology Initiative. And what I didn't get to say in my two minutes is the National Registry of Environmental Professionals, which certifies people to do all kinds of environmental quality testing, has just certified SCADA, Supervisory Control and Data Administration Systems, as something that needs to be studied for its environmental impact on the environment in general. And I am part of the HSCADA task force, how these SCADA systems are impacting human beings. And there are thousands of reports from targeted individuals that crimes are being committed against them. And my intention in coming here tonight was to support their claims so that law enforcement with as much support from political...
I think she asked you the names of the magazines, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Becker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Becker, and I came here from Racine, Wisconsin. I have been a victim of this technology for 14 years. I have been tortured for 14 years. My Justice Department has failed me. My executive branch has failed me. My senators have failed me. My congressmen have failed me. You are the only people in this country that have the courage to even put this on the agenda. That's why I flew all this way to thank you and to address you. This is torture, and it is enslavement. And any one of these people can tell you the same thing. We have suffered desperately, and I'm sorry if I'm emotional, but I'm very tired. But if you won't save us, save yourselves, because I promise you, this will come back to every one of you. Every one of us in this country are going to be tapped into these computer systems, and you are going to see what this feels like. Do something now while you still can. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Could I ask a question? Could you be more specific in terms of how you feel that you've been in justice?
You mean as far as the Justice Department feeling me?
Well, in terms of your being a victim...
You mean what I'm feeling?
Yeah. Explain a little bit to me how you perceive yourself as being...
Sure. Well, I have actual photographs of burns on my body. When I went to my doctor, the response was, "How do I know you didn't do that to yourself? How do you even address that?" I've passed two psychological evaluations, not one, but two. The one physician said, "You're mentally sound as a bell." He said, "I don't have any idea what's going on with you." When I go to sleep, when I go to try to sleep, I feel like I'm being lit up like a Christmas tree. I feel every cell in my body just bouncing out of my body. I can't even describe it. I get electric shock up my rectum. I get electric shock up my nose. I've woken up with burns on the end of my tongue. I've had burns on the palms of both of my hands. I vibrate. I vibrate. I can barely hold a piece of paper without quivering. Does that answer your question?
I'm trying to find what's the source of the...
The source are these exotic weapons. They talk about in 2977, they talk about the space weapons, space-based weapons. Basically, in that document, it talks about exotic weapons... Basically, in that document, it talks about exotic weapons, and that's what we're talking about. And the fact of the matter is, they did complete that global surveillance network. My cousin worked for the Defense Department. She worked on the global mapping of that system. And when I told her what I was going through, all she could say was, "You're on your own." Well, I've figured that out. I've figured that out. If you would please, I urge you to pass this. I realize you can't enforce it, but if you would pass it, it might give other communities the courage to do the same thing and show our Defense Department, we are not the enemy. We are not to be attacked. We are not terrorists. Most of us are defenseless women.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Derek Robinson, followed by Laquisha Baker, Dolores Hall, Kim, Alex Elizabeth Adams, Robert Swiggen. Please come forward. Derek Robinson.
I'm Derek Robinson, Director of a human rights group called Freedom from Covert Harassment and Surveillance. In regards to the Space Preservation Act resolution that's before you, many of us have traveled here today to say thanks very much for listening and responding to so many that have come to you over the past couple of years. This is a momentous occasion for our organization and for humanity. You are one of the very few governing authorities that have considered the dangers of psychotronic technologies. Research in this area has been ongoing since the 50s by government agencies, corporations, criminal elements, religious cults, et cetera. But only since the arrival of the Internet has this Holocaust been made known to thousands of people who have found that they are victims of psychotronic technologies and that they have been surreptitiously victimized by them. And as the devices proliferate and the public becomes more aware of these covert activities, legislation on a local and national level will be needed to address the concerns with regard to a vulnerable society. Your resolution today is a, would be a giant step forward in ensuring the health, safety, and well-being for all people. Thank you.
Laquisha Baker.
Hello to all the legislators in City Hall. Jevanka, my girl Amy over there. I've been a Richmond resident forty-plus years. I've seen two of my friends try and fight this fight, but their minds are guarded. There's no coming back. My mother was a Black Panther. They killed her. She was only fifty-eight years old. And I'm just happy at this moment that somebody in our town, our city, has opened the doors for many people who couldn't make it, didn't make it, and were survivors of it. And I just wanna say thank you.
Dolores Hall.
I did not know you were gonna call me to speak, but I will share. I head up the Los Angeles Freedom from Covert Harassment Group. This is a support group, and I have about three hundred people that is in that group. I get over four hundred emails on a weekly basis of people asking me to help them and begging me, "Please help. No one will listen to me." I'm sixty-five years old, and as I walk here up to this podium, I'm in so much pain. I have burns all over my body. They, my doctor, I had treated with for sixteen years. My leg swollen up from the electric magnetic frequencies hitting me on my legs. He told me to go to the hospital. And when I went to hospital, they were supposed to put IV in me. They sent me to the mental ward because they said, "I did this to myself. Oh, it never hurt me." I have been a victim since 2007. You can't see this horrific electric hitting you. Electric is invisible. You take a remote control to turn your TV. You can't see it turn your television. It hurts so bad. I wanna thank you for opening your minds and your time today. I am a retired legal investigator. I have asked all my friends, I had very prominent friends, to help me. They can't do anything about this. It is way, way over our heads. It's like, they say it's the shadow of government. It is people that cannot be touched. Please help us.
Kim. Our next speaker.
My name is Kimberly Buckner, and I have been a targeted individual for a very long time. The things I have experienced due to being targeted, they have been unreal. But however, I can personally attest that this is very real indeed. My life has been destroyed in every possible way, and every day has been a struggle for me. I'm very grateful to be before you today, due to Amy Anderson's due diligence and to everyone else involved. I thank you council members for giving us targeted individuals a chance to speak and to be heard, and I pray that these atrocities will soon be brought to an end. But we need your help. Thank you.
Alex.
Good evening. My name is Alec Rafter. I am an NYU graduate and have spent much of my time working at a financial holding company in San Francisco. I have been a targeted individual for eight years, six months. I'm from Lafayette, California, which is in this county. I am here to support and corroborate what these other speakers are trying to convey. This technology exists and is being used on a mass scale. It is torturous, brutal, and inhumane. It happens everywhere I go. People don't understand the capabilities of this technology. The person I came with here today, tonight, was being shocked and stabbed in this very room with a directed energy weapon while waiting to speak with the council. My ears are getting frequency tinnitus while sitting, while I was sitting here waiting for you, as well as a technology called voice-to-skelld, developed by Dr. Alan Frey. Like I said, this happens everywhere I go in Northern and Southern California. I've been tortured all day, all night, minute after minute, year after year after year. We need your help and support to stop this, to save us and to prevent this from happening to others. Please support banning the so-called space-based weapons. Thank you very much.
Robert Swiggen.
My name is Robert Swiggen. I live in Modesto, California. I'm here tonight after being targeted for twelve years with direct energy weapons, voice-to-skelld. I wake up in the middle of the night in excruciating pain. I, there's nobody I can call. There's nobody to help me. You know, I have sometimes suicidal idealization because I, there's nobody to help. You know, I've been diagnosed schizophrenic and delusional at fifty-three and fifty-seven years old. You know, I'm a graduate of junior college with a degree in counseling and human service. I just, I commend you people for what you're doing here, and I wanna, I'm here to support my friends, and I know that this has been very difficult for me and my family, you know, my family. I have four children, and one is in prison right now. I suspect he was hit for about forty-five minutes, and others will not even talk to me. My family's been fragmented, and I, you know, I don't, I don't tell anybody what's happening to me anymore. It's a dark secret with me. I cannot explain to people what's happening. The police in Modesto are at least talking to me now. They're not taking me down to the mental health facility. I thank you very much for listening to me.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Marilyn Langlois, Richmond resident. I want to thank Ms. Anderson for bringing this topic forward and bringing so many speakers. I urge you to adopt this resolution. As has been said, the original Space Preservation Act was introduced by Congressman Kucinich, co-sponsored by Congresswoman Barbara Lee and Congressman Pete Stark of the Bay Area. And this concept was also voted on and supported unanimously by the United Nations to prohibit weaponization of space and space-based weapons. These are clearly not good for anyone on Earth and not good for anyone in Richmond. You have to be aware that there are a lot of exotic weapons research programs going on, some of them covert, some of them not covert. A former Richmond resident sent me a lot of emails last year about a public comment period for allowing U.S. military testing of directed energy weapons in the Olympic Peninsula in the state of Washington, which is of great concern. In terms of the types of weapons that are affecting these individuals, before you judge the targeted individuals, I would suggest that you listen to them. Take the time to really listen deeply to their experience. Try to put yourself in their shoes for a moment. If you can believe them, then please do what you can to support them. If you're not sure, then I urge you to take the precautionary principle when in doubt or on the side of extra protection for those who are vulnerable. So please do adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Sylvia Gray-White.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Gray-White, a very longtime Richmond resident. Tonight, I'm so thankful and happy that our city is looking up, waking up, and standing up. Approval of this agenda item will make an impact on the whole world and will help us to restore our Mother Earth and our health. The heavy metal toxins falling down on us daily from the chemtrails are done by our military without our approval and knowledge. Lead is one of the many chemicals in the chemtrails, even though the government banned it decades ago, banned it from paint, toys, even bullets, another manufacturing processing. This toxin has really negatively impacted my life. Lead is very toxic, and there are no safe levels. It displaces the calcium in your bones, among many other illnesses, particularly with the children. The level of lead in my body was, has drastically increased in the past three years. I gotta get the lead out. We need to stop this constant daily abuse of our universal rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. If you don't feel good, you can't live good. I am not the only one breathing this pollution. If you breathe, you're breathing it too. We have rights. Stand up for them. Now, in order to stand, I gotta use a cane, but I still can stand and will stand up for what's right.
Our last speaker is Elizabeth Adams.
First and foremost, I'd like to pass this cellphone around. This is what electronic burns look like. This is my six-year-old granddaughter who has been targeted since birth. So can I just walk and show this to you?
Give it to the clerk.
Yeah, give it to the clerk. You can't-- I asked the bar, could he-- Yeah, yeah. Be careful that. See, and this was taken less than thirty days ago when we were at Indian Hospital. That's when, when you hear of the victim speak, being electronically burned, that is my six-year-old granddaughter. I am fifty-nine years old. I have six grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. I first and foremost want to say that I thank God for every one of you, and I mean literally from the bottom of my heart. I thank Him for each one of you. I thank God for the blessings that He's gonna bring your way just for addressing these issues. These issues are beyond the average eye. The average eye can't even see it, so it's not even worth even talking about in that sense. I have sent each and every one of you information. Everything that I sent you is just what you need to know. But there's one more thing left. Your local fusion center. You need to do some deep research into your local fusion center. Just look it up online. That is where you will find information, ill activities of some sort that is going on within, I'm not gonna say city government, because I can't pinpoint it, but you need to look into your local fusion center. Secondly, mental health of children. May I finish just two minutes, please?
I think we're gonna need to give everybody the same amount of time.
Okay, no problem.
That was the last speaker.
I'm a researcher. I also have evidence and history. Is it possible to comment?
Ma'am, you know, if you didn't sign up, you can't speak. Okay, I have vice mayor Meyer.
So I was just gonna briefly say that the weaponization of space as has been, as the history that was described so eloquently by Councilmember McLaughlin is something that I think is extremely immoral, and we should not be, as a nation, engaging in, and so I'm gonna support this resolution based on that.
Do you have any other speakers? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet. I can make the motion, sure that we adopt the resolution. Let's put before us.
Okay. A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Pin play, has a question or something.
Oh, councilmember, pin play.
I just, I just want to address for a second this whole idea about weaponization of space, and there seems to be this assumption that just because Ronald Reagan supported Star Wars, it's automatically become some unmitigated evil. You know, the context in which it was considered a problem was simply because, you know, there was this perception that Star Wars or any kind of strategic defense initiative could not be made foolproof, and it could not be made foolproof because the opponent, particularly a very well-armed opponent like the Soviet Union, could launch like tens of thousands of dummy missiles at any one point, and so it would be almost impossible to intercept all of them and to distinguish the nuclear missiles from the dummy missiles. And, and, and the understanding was that it would be, that there could be a problem created because, based on the overestimation of the effectiveness of Star Wars, namely that America might think that it was too effective and therefore go for a first strike and knock out all the Soviet weapons, or on the other hand, the Soviets might feel it was too effective and go for a preemptive strike beforehand. And it was only in that specific Cold War context that Star Wars was considered a horrible idea. Actually, Star Wars is not a particularly bad idea. The whole idea is that you can knock out someone's weapons before they enter your airspace, in fact, long before they enter your airspace. And this, for example, was practiced more than twenty years ago in the Gulf War when the Patriot system-- the Patriot system, you know, modification of this was used when the Patriot system knocked out some of the Iraqi missiles that were launched at Israel. And, and it is not just a perfectly valid system, but it is actually a particularly useful system in the time that we have now where there are nations which are not quite as well-armed as the Soviet Union used to be in the nineteen eighties, which may not have the capability to launch tremendous numbers of missiles at, at any one time. And in fact, this is, you know, a fairly useful system to have. And so this automatic knee-jerk reaction that because Reagan, you know, supported Star Wars, and at the time it was considered a bad idea, so for that purpose, it is a bad and an evil idea for forever. I mean, I just think this is a wrong understanding of the system, and, and I just want to mention that.
Okay, I have the Councilmember McLaughlin next.
So I, I just, the reason I was interrupting because I don't think we should get into this, that's kind of way off base. I was just giving the history of this. But in general, I will say that there were some of us in the eighties who were talking about a nuclear freeze, like to stop the, the arms war rather than weapons in space. And, you know, I think space should be for exploration and, you know, good things to learn scientifically, not for a weapons race.
Shall we call for the questions, Mr. Mayor?
Wait, no, we're not having anything from the audience. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes. Just, just last week on Sixty Minutes, there was, there was a special on a reintroduction of the arms war with people trying to develop missiles to take out communication satellites. But any kind of war effort is wrong, and we need to do whatever we can to stop all war efforts. Now, when I was in university in, in the nineteen eighties, for humanities class, I did a, a paper on a science fiction novel. And what I actually did was, was I took all of the predictions in this science fiction novel, and then I went to magazines and newspapers, and I was surprised to find that every single prediction in this science fiction novel that was written twenty years earlier had already come true, and they were happening there then in nineteen, nineteen eighty. So, so it's easy for me to see that things which are wrong can happen because we have the wrong mindset. We are, we have the mindset, which is a war mindset, and this proposition that was put forth by Kucinich was to change our attitudes towards one of seeking peace, and that's why I'm endorsing it.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Well, I want to say that I do think this debate is, it is on topic because, you know, this, the debate over Star Wars is sort of part of what initiated this. And I think what I would say, and it's been said, that any sort of, in my view, the idea that we don't have enough tools to kill each other here on Earth and so that we need to start doing it in space, that just is simply immoral. And, you know, it may be that some wars are unavoidable, that may be true, but whatever we can do to get our, our country to move away from that mindset and move away from utilizing new methods of war, we should support, so that's why I support this resolution.
Okay, if there's nobody else, let's vote. Wait, Councilmember Pim Play?
So the motion before us, does that include these things like chemtrails and stuff because, or no?
Well, let me, I think he's bringing up a good point because I'm really confused. I think that, that the resolution itself is very simple. It simply says, "The city of Richmond hereby supports the Space Preservation Act and Companion Space Preservation Treaty to ensure that individuals will not be targets of space-based weapons." So I see that. All the testimony I've heard tonight are about targeted individuals. And so, I mean, I'm confused. Is this about space-based weapons or is it about targeted individuals? And if individuals are targeted, who is targeting them and why? So I just don't understand it.
It's simple enough. It's saying that, I mean, and on the near, therefore, as you read, we are supporting the Space Preservation Act and Companion Space Preservation Treaty. The reason we're doing this is to ensure that individuals will not be targets of space-based weapons, which is what they're saying. Like, all this stuff is, is high technology, it's, you know, and so that's what we're adopting here. And, and, you know, I think, you know, whether you believe it or not, one thing that was very clear, and I've met with folks a lot around this issue, and so in some of them I'm just hearing tonight, but even the ones that I heard tonight, like, just out of compassion from folks are saying, "Help us," and you're supporting this by adopting this resolution, you know, I think it sends out a message that, you know, we sympathize with you, we support you, and the very least we can do is just pass this resolution to make sure that, you know, you feel the support and love and sympathy that you.
Well, look, I sympathize.
It's simple. It reads right there, Mayor, that's all we're trying to pass. What you see before you is what we're trying to pass. Don't complicate it, it's simple. So vote it yes or no.
I sympathize with everyone who is suffering some kind of affliction. And, but on the other hand, you know, in nineteen sixty-seven, the U.S. adopted, or the, the President signed the Treaty on Principles Governing the Activities of States in the Exploration and Use of Outer Space, including the Moon and other celestial bodies. So the U.S. government has acted on this, and they have, and within that particular treaty is a ban on, on using outer space for military purposes. So I'm kind of, I'm, I just don't know quite, I, I just don't understand what we're talking about. Are we talking about the weaponization of space? Are we talking about chemtrails? Are we talking about individuals who are being targeted? If so, by whom and why?
Mayor, can I address that, please?
I mean, this is, you know, I'm just a dumb city council person, and this is just way, way over my head. And, and I frankly think that it's sort of way out of the purview of what this city council could be taking, taking up. We've got real problems here. We've got pothole roads, we've got a budget that's out of balance, we've got crime, we've got greenhouse gases, we've got all these things to worry about. And here I'm being asked to support a resolution that deals with, deals with things like chemtrails and particle beams and plasmas and mind-control technologies. I just don't know enough about it. If I were an expert, I'd probably take a side, but I'm not. And so for that reason, I'm just not going to support it. Maybe sometime I'll learn more and be more, more oriented towards support.
I'd like to call the question.
Councilmember Bates?
Well, it is confusing. I'm going to support the resolution for the simple reason that we have voted on a lot of dumber ideas than what this resolution represent. And again, we know that we don't control the universe, we don't control Congress, so this is the least of my worries. So I'm going to support. Now, call for the question.
Does anybody else want to talk about it? Okay, let's just vote.
Councilmember Pim Play?
No.
No? The motion passes with Councilmember Pim Play voting no and Mayor Butt voting no.
Thank you, God. At some point, you'll catch up with space.
One reason I voted for it was there wasn't one speaker in opposition to it, so.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. I think we have one more left.
Item J1 is to direct the city manager to work with the city clerk to develop a schedule to make the agenda packet available to the public seven days prior to the city council meeting.
More stupid than this. Yeah, let them go on that. They spent here, just let the time, you know, vote. I still don't understand, I don't understand how a person is affected.
Well, what they're saying is that, you know, like, there's electrical currents happening all the time, and I, you know what I like.
Are we, let's, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Item J1 is to direct the city manager to work with the city clerk to develop a schedule to make the agenda packet available to the public seven days prior to the city council
Okay, this is, whose item is this? Councilmember Pim Play, Martinez, and Beckle?